All your efforts last week?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome. I got a few acknowledgements I'll make when we get to the special.
No, that's great. Well, thank you, because I had a very busy week. I had a service I had to do Tuesday night and I'm on a search committee for the new minister at First Parish and we had the big congregational package that had to be in by the end of the day Saturday, so I was so happy.
Did you find a minister yet?
No, no, it's the search package that goes out to the denomination.
Oh, okay.
Starts the process. We have an interim minister right now, but yeah. So I was very happy to be able to concentrate on other things.
As Delisa said, the refrigerator cleaned itself.
It's Alf, I love it.
Oh, my God, I can't believe it.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I did.
[laughing].
Wow.
That's since 2003, you know, it's like.
You guys are bullshits.
We, uh.
Because, you know, we asked him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I do have to make the record clear that I actually clean the refrigerator more than anybody else.
You guys never do, you know how it works.
It was a, it was a, now.
Yes, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Anyway.
No, just a lot of little moving pieces and timelines and deadlines. They got done, you guys did well. I was really panicked last night thinking that I blew something up timeline wise, you know, on the town report, oh, the town meeting.
That's why I gave you a call, because I thought.
Thank you. She called me a ton.
I am not going to try to respond to this email. I'll just call.
Well, I give you your warning.
Because I don't have my device that I take upstairs does not have this email address on it. I did that for a while.
Refrigerator clean worked really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just stood there, where is it? Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did, we did. Alrighty, shall we call it to order?
Oh, are we on?
Oh, we were on a long time.
No, no, I just adjusted, you're on now.
Oh, okay.
You're good.
Alright then.
Or you said Roger, he doesn't do anything until the.
Okay. I have not had a chance to look at these yet. Do you mind waiting until next week? Yeah.
Sure. They were all, all of them were good on mine.
Okay, next, we have a motor vehicle refund fiscal year '17.
Did you do the record statement?
Oh, yes, sorry. Open public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. But you guys knew that anyway.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Okay, motor vehicle fiscal year '17 refund in the amount of $2,600, $2,666.25. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
As long as I'm not on there.
You know, you're not on there, that's why I always look at these, that.
Yeah.
Alright, hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a request from the fire chief to have Sharon McGowan sign payroll and invoice submittals in his absence. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? I just stand, she puts all these things together anyway, so.
She's handling most of that at this point.
Okay.
Yep.
Hearing none, then, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have an acceptance of. Just want to be sure I understand this. When does his term expire?
Well, you renewed him for a three-year term.
Just a couple of months ago.
Three weeks ago.
Yeah.
But now.
When would his current term expire?
The end of November.
The end of November, okay. That's what I was asking, yeah.
Thursday, yeah.
That's, okay. Then a request not to, basically not to be appointed, which would be a resignation since we'd already done the appointment. Kevin Diggins, motion to accept that resignation and to issue a letter of thanks for his service on the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just I'll miss, I'll miss Kevin on the board.
Hmm?
I'll miss Kevin on the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, really, really great questions.
Absolutely. And that's a tough, it's a tough board to be on. So with thanks to him, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next. Oh, did something else get attached? No.
No, that's the other one.
We're good.
Yeah.
Okay. The next is an appointment to the economic development committee. As I'm quickly looking at this email, there is some correspondence. And it's not clear to me, did Peter Hoffman indicate that he was favoring?
He indicated they met with her and they did want her to be appointed.
Okay.
And then I just noted back to Peter that it's a joint appointment between the selectmen and the planning board, so I copied the planning board chair on your, this draft letter I put together, which would, if you both signed, you know, it'd be both boards appointing on the same letter.
Mm-hmm.
And then Ron wrote back that he was asking whether, I'm not sure.
Well, it's a joint appointment, and he says on Monday, the 27th, which is today, I'll bring her name before the planning board tomorrow night and we can decide if an interview is necessary, so I don't.
If you want to wait for the planning board to do the thing first?
Well, it's a joint appointment.
Yeah, I'm just, you could do whatever you want. You would want to bring her in here, or do you want to wait for the planning board?
I can tell you Tricia is, would be an asset on whatever committee she.
Yeah, no, I don't have any opposition to that, I'm just looking at the.
You do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's one vacancy at this time on it.
One, or?
One, with another one possibly coming shortly, just I have not seen the formal resignation on the other.
Well, I don't mind taking the vote for us, but it can't have effect until there's the planning board.
Correct. So that letter is drafted with a signature line for you as the chairman, but also for the planning board chair, if that's what they choose to do for tomorrow night, it's me.
Okay. Probably best to re-date it the 29th, because it's dated before the.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
I can, I can.
Yeah. But I don't mind taking the vote and then, you know.
Or you could let them do it first and then you sign on afterwards, if you'd rather they take their vote first.
I would suggest this, oh, I don't, because I think this will be clerk's signature, right? Or all three's?
Actually, it's chairs, each board.
Okay. No, that's fine, because I'm in on Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll take a vote on behalf of the board of selectmen on this issue right now and authorizing me to sign it if the planning board approves on Tuesday night.
So moved.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll date that to 29th, I'll come in on Wednesday and. Okay, we have amounts to be paid to Antonelli Construction in connection with the Old Town Hall. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
I did try to get Mr. Lundberg today, but he, it was out of the office until tomorrow, so I will try to track him down tomorrow so that I can.
Okay.
You know, see where we are in the line at this point.
ACG, or, oh, National Grid?
Yeah.
National Grid.
Yeah. I just thought I might as well update that while we were talking about this, so. Yeah, I left emails last week. I didn't get an out-of-office notice from him from the emails, but I thought he might, you know, be out Wednesday or Friday.
Yeah.
So I tried him today, and when I tried him today, his phone indicated he's back tomorrow, so.
Oh.
I did leave him a phone message and said I would be calling him tomorrow to see where we were.
Okay, good.
Okay. Always going to have to, have the highway department back in. Anyway, any comments or further comments or questions? Hearing none, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is to establish me as chairman of the board's life and as unauthorized party to execute agreements regarding the Council of Aging grant allocation budget.
Need a move, motion to approve?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'll put this aside, because this is the Green Community Annual Report. Okay. The next item was the dog complaint.
Are we waiting for Chief Galvin for that?
Yeah, Chief, it says Chief Galvin's aware of the matter and has asked the animal control officer to investigate further. Typically, the animal control officer will investigate, talk to people. If it can't be resolved at that level, then we have a dog hearing and we have a wide range of powers that we have, I mean, you know, having the dog, and we have to do this a couple times in the past, had to have dogs actually physically contained, you know, by a fence or whatever, where they, you know, couldn't, didn't get the idea of the electronic fence. We've never actually had to have one put down, but we do have, it's one of those sort of rare powers that selectmen have. But we have in the past required that the dogs be confined, or if they're out of the area of confinement, that they be on a leash, so, I mean, I have, you know, we'll have to see what the vax are on this one.
Right.
It did, it sounded like, you know, it was, the dog was a problem from what was in here, so. But we will see what happens when we get the vax from the animal control officer. Let's see. We have a notice here from the planning board that they will, they're having a meeting tomorrow. Chief among those things is that at 7:45, they're going to have a public hearing on the special town meeting articles.
I think they're asking if the selectmen will still attend.
They were requesting that one of us attend the special town.
Yeah, I could, I could attend that one. You guys cleaned the refrigerator last week, so I could attend that one. Okay.
Through the planning board, they use on you, so.
I know, it seems suitable, doesn't it?
It's on you.
No, I was just thinking for a moment, you know, that I was, I didn't have some other meeting, I have one Wednesday, but not Tuesday, so. Alright.
The first thing, though, was on the agenda, but not in that, not in the booklet there, was 10A personnel setting another date to finish performance reviews.
Mm-hmm, so we'll get to that. Oh, was that on the?
That was just before the one you just did.
Okay.
There's nothing, there's nothing in there, just scheduling.
Okay, we'll get to that, then. I think is, isn't 7:15 when we had the, or is it 7:30?
That was 7:30, that was, 7:30 is energy committee, 7:15 agriculture.
Well, then, let's talk about scheduling. To complete the reviews.
It shouldn't take too long.
No, no, I mean, do you want to do it this Saturday, the second?
Well, it's the St. Joseph's Fair, but.
St. Joseph's Fair?
Yeah.
I thought that was in September.
Yeah, the beer festival.
Well, the, the.
Craft or holiday.
Basket thing.
Oh, yeah, well, it's, because it's, isn't it Christmas and Merlin Day, or?
Yes, it might be, yeah.
But, I mean, I think, you want, what's a good time, 9:30, 10:00, what works for people, either one of those is fine for me, 9:00 is fine for me.
Earlier's better, because.
Earlier's better for you, Lisa?
Yeah, just because then we're out of here and.
Yeah, you want to say 9:00?
Yeah, let's say 9:00.
9:00 is okay? Okay.
Right.
9 o'clock.
And I did want to let Mary know, because I couldn't find the paperwork, that we did approve the board of health employees.
Okay.
At their request for the colas only.
Okay.
So we have to sign them, but.
Yes, to sign them, but I couldn't find the paperwork.
So put them back in there, to, okay.
I couldn't find the paperwork for us to sign.
Should be a couple layers down on my desk, I can find it.
If you would like, get them out, I can sign them on Wednesday when I come in to sign the other things, so.
Okay.
Okay, because we already authorized any one of us to sign that.
If I move quick, I can get it to you tonight, but, okay.
Okay, so, planning board. Here we're going to have a public hearing on Monday, December 18th at 7:15. Yes, I think all will be present. I will be present, do you run on the 18th?
Yeah, I will be here, okay.
If you run on the 18th. Which reminds me, typically, we don't meet the week between Christmas and New Year's. Obviously, you know, Christmas is Monday, which is, we have to meet on Tuesday anyway, but.
Right.
Generally, we do, we don't meet that.
Okay.
You already don't have anything scheduled.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
December 18th, and then the next one is Tuesday, January 2nd.
So all of us will be here?
Yep.
I'm not aware of any further update. There wasn't a meeting last week. I don't know if there's a meeting this week, I have to find out.
I think there is a meeting this week. There was a, an email from Tom Chalmers talking about the temporary opening of the 1870 Town Hall.
Yeah, that was even before last week.
Okay.
We talked about that, yeah.
I wasn't aware, I just was only aware since the email came.
Yeah.
So you're aware of that.
Yeah, that's why I said we need to really step up and get that in.
Right, right, okay.
Yep, but I'm not aware of any further developments in San Luis, I'm going to try to chase National Grid tomorrow.
Right.
Are, do you, do you know whether there's a meeting or not? I was going to.
I thought there was.
Okay.
I thought he said the meeting was the week after Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Okay. I will be in town and I can attend that, but I just want to.
And a couple people were asking, we're thinking like January is when the building will be open, or it's all dependent on the power at this point.
Right. I, I do think it will be open by January, I think.
Okay.
Let's hope so.
Okay, but probably this December, probably.
I think mid-December is probably, like, what he did say, he was, would try to prioritize this, and he said, I want to get it all done before the snow falls, but there's global warming, so I don't, you know, I don't know what that means.
I saw a piece like today.
Oh, okay.
You did not.
National Grid didn't.
No.
Is there anything in writing about the zoning board of appeals request for the release?
I did not do that.
Hmm?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
There were attachments to that.
Yes, there's a.
Um.
What's that?
Might I review this, and we'll take action on it next, next week, and I also want to talk to Keith to see if there's any problems, and maybe talk to a couple of the others to see if there have been any problems with the release of that, okay?
Yeah, it's no time constraints, is there?
No.
Okay.
No, no, they're asking us to.
We actually have 20 years to.
Yeah.
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 So years to figure it out, so.
I can get to it by then, yes.
Yeah, I think so.
You're not looking for me to sign any warrants at this point, they're out and.
No, they're gone.
Sign, good, okay.
No, but we, no, I guess we don't have to sign anything, but.
Okay.
Put that on beforehand.
Okay.
I did, I did, are you at the special town meeting line item?
I guess we are. Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of people who helped us out.
Absolutely.
In Mary's absence. Lisa, you did a great job formatting and running to the post office.
And wrangling the postmaster.
June and Eloise and Clinton.
Eloise.
And, yes, Eloise was a big help. And Clinton offset printers, and Sharon McGowan also made a run to the post office, I believe. And our constable, Robert Williams, who came and distributed today.
You're here.
And, and you two.
I did some review of it, but.
Yes, you did.
But that's stuff we usually do anyway, so.
We're also.
Appreciate it, anyway.
That's great.
Thank you to all of them.
We did it, yes, thank, and thank you to you guys.
We got it done.
Yeah.
We got it done.
Yeah, very proud of you all.
Indeed.
It's a badge for that.
You know, Tim actually gets virtual badges for completing different things, strings and stuff.
Oh, I'm going to have to create some virtual badges, for sure.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment about that mailing?
Yes.
It's a positive comment.
Not just negative.
I just got it today, and even as a former selectman, I have no idea what half of that stuff is, so I think you should start putting a summary underneath each article, just saying this is going to let you have blah, 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 three fast food places, because otherwise you look at it and unlike most of us not being lawyers, such as yourself, it's, it's.
Most of those were not submitted by lawyers, you know.
Well, those older ones are.
I think the ones that I submitted were the ones that are easy to understand.
Well, it's just a suggestion that you put a summary at the bottom of them and make it easier to understand.
I did get the headings this time, but I think that's an excellent idea.
A lot of towns do do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We were in a pinch.
I know, but, I mean, we never do, we've never done it before, but I think it would be a good thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your input.
You're welcome, Mrs. Keith.
Alright, well, we might as well run through a couple budget forms here, because they're, some of them are quite. A couple of them are pretty straightforward. The purchase of services for the town accountant, this is $30,000, it is level funded, this is pursuant to the external audit contract that we have, so this is pretty easy. I take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Are these things that we always get the night up, or do you ever see these beforehand, or?
Uh.
I know things are crazy, I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. I do try to take them apart, scan, we'll scan and keep them that way electronically and for the bigger departments, yeah, they should, if they're wise, they'd actually scan and send directly to you.
That'd be awesome.
Well, but what I would say is, we get them when we get them. We don't have to take action on them in the night that we get them. So, you know, I mean, if any of these somebody has a question on, pass it over, we'll, you know, talk to whoever you need to talk about in the, in the course of the week, so, you know, I mean, that's, that's really the way that it works.
In perfect world, but yes, I would have scanned and sent all those to you in like one email, so you could have seen them all together.
Okay. I just, this, I didn't.
She does generally, I think.
So I was just asking.
In a lot of the budgets, these were sort of the.
I have so many things to scan and send you all.
Yes.
The.
Yay.
Electricity and fuel oil are sort of a.
Yep.
Done deal.
It was more going forward, it just didn't.
Right.
Yeah.
And as I say, that's, it's really when we get them, and when we have our questions answered, we act on them, so. We have an electricity request. The, it asks that we increase the $60,000 budget to 15, by $15,000 to $75,000, and it is cited as the new highway barn. I would also note that we will probably be picking up some of the electricity for.
The Old Town Hall.
The Old Town Hall.
Yeah.
These may be ones we want to talk to the submitter about, why we. There is also an increase in fuel oil of 23,000, bringing it from just a little over 50,000 to basically 75,000. That's also attributable to the new highway barn, and I would note that we know we're going to have to pick up some of the fuel oil. So I would say we should, we probably want to talk about those, you know, as I say, I want to go through, the one with June is like a no-brainer, because it's contractual and. Streetlights are level funded at 9,600. Obviously, if we change things in the course of the year, we, you know, we won't expend these, so, motion to approve on that?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is veteran services. The total is 19,610, that's just a $77 increase, is, which is represented by the COLA. Is, which is represented by the COLA part-time salary. The rest of, out of that 19,000, 16,056 dollars are paid, are payments and benefits. So that's, motion to approve that one?
Motion to approve.
Any comments or questions on that one?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye. We just have one more, so we'll do that before we start. This is the Memorial Day observance. It is $1,900 and it is level funded. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And this just covers the expenses and so on of putting on the Memorial Day parade and services. Okay, and so no other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye. All right, so we got those done, question on the fuel oil and the electricity. All right, I think we have a report from the Energy Committee.
It's not really a report.
Well.
You just want a signature, is that it?
I just want a signature.
No, you know, I want one of those little explanations of.
Every year, we have to give the Department of Energy, Green Communities Division, a yearly report, and in it, we report on the five criterion that we had to, to become a green community. We had to have, and, let's see, the first one is zoning and right to, whatever it's called.
As of.
As of right, and we have one project, it's not in there, I actually put it back in. One project, which was Tim Wheeler's in 2013. Number three is our energy conservation, and there's a very long list of those projects in there going back from the beginning. Number four is fuel usage, which has gone up gasoline-wise because we have two more cruisers and a Council on Aging, and fuel usage, what's the last one?
Stretch code.
Stretch code, and we put in all the houses, they changed it, so all we have to do is put in new buildings and their curves rating, which is a measure of their energy efficiency.
Okay. One thing that, the last agenda topic regarding fuel, oil, and electricity, that's obviously going to impact that report next year, so that's something we'd be very interested in, knowing what your conclusions are when talking to the department heads.
You know, the, the town barn was built to be net zero, but because National Grid took away the funding for the solar, it doesn't have solar on it, but it is built to very high energy efficiency standards, so. I find those numbers kind of high.
Yes, I actually did too, that's why we'll have to talk about them, yes. And, and, you know, a good portion, I mean, a portion of the building is cold storage, if you will. So, yes, we definitely have to talk about that.
And one thing for potentially next year and going forward, we would like to restore the solar. The sense of the word is that there's a strong interest in restoring the solar to that barn over time, maybe in a phased approach, so that's something that we will be coming to you in probably the coming years and potentially going to town meetings.
I think it's a great idea. And we still have plans for everything for that, don't we? Yeah, so that, you know, that's one phase of a project that we don't have to pay for, really.
Yeah, we spoke to Amy about that. It is possible, it's maybe not as efficient as getting the economies of scale of doing it all at once, but you can stage these things if you, if you plan appropriately.
Is there any state money that would be available for that?
Green Communities doesn't pay for solar.
Okay.
The bid on it, when they did the bids, was 500,000.
Okay. And do you remember what the annual payback for that was?
I do not, but we'll find out.
All right.
Once it opens.
Electric that you're talking about there, it looks like it wouldn't be that long.
Yeah, except it doesn't have that direct effect, does it?
Well.
Well, I was saying, if you have rid of the oil and the, the electric bills that I was seeing there, it wouldn't take very long to pay off.
Well, it would just be the electric.
It'd just be the electric.
Unless you supplement heating with electric.
Yeah.
I think the other thing is that, that we now have three buildings, will have three, well, three buildings that, the old barn, the old rescue, the old fire, that really don't have a purpose. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it might be useful to look at them and rip them down.
Yeah, and that would be another question asked, is if there, is any offset appropriate to not using the, the old buildings?
Yeah, no, I mean, I had lots of questions about that, that, yeah, absolutely. Any other comments or questions about this report?
No.
All right. Then I would accept a motion to authorize me to execute the confirmation of our review and verification of this report.
So moved.
Second.
So no further comments or questions, none from the studio audience, all right. Then, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye. Thanks, guys. Thanks for your efforts.
You can scan it and email it to me as a PDF.
Yes.
Because that's, I'd send it in as a PDF.
I can do it.
Yep.
And it's only the one page that needs to be signed.
Just the signature.
Just the signature page.
The rest is all spreadsheet.
Yeah, no, this, I'm putting this back in the appointments, so, yes, we'll put that. No, I bury that agenda all the time. I bury it all the time, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no problem, I probably just buried it. Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
All right, so we'll put it there. Well, I think that completed the buried agenda.
Yep, here it is.
All right, now there it is.
Unless there's any Selectmen updates or.
No, I think we've updated what we've, well, then.
I think we did that.
Add over the last week.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Welcome back, Mary.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you.
It could have been worse.
I like the welcome basket you left me.
It could have been worse.
I know it could have been worse, yeah, thank you for helping, I know you did, thank you.
All right, I would take then a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Thank you.